And two very challenging years, doing such a great job.
Thank you.
A lot of motivation for me sitting in the seat, a high standard if we placed on it.
Thank you.
Job well done. As Kevin Burris said, the most important things we do here as a board is to bring in a new director. And you led that fantastically on the search committee and also in the transition. So here we are. I'd like to also thank our new trustees for coming in, Elliot and Robin, welcome to the board. And we'll give you a clap, too. Okay, oath of office, I guess that's you, Kelly?
Yes, so only two of you have to sign the oath of office. All right, I'm sorry, three of you, because Michael has been reelected. So on page three, you'll see the oath of office. Do you want to swear them in, or do you want me to swear them in?
Tell me what to say.
It's right on page three.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, Elliot and, oh, Michael, too.
And Michael's here, because he was reelected.
Okay. Read the oath of office, consultation of the state of New York together. I do something.
The state of New York, and that it will faithfully discharge the duties of the office trustee of the John Germain Memorial Library.
Okay, consider yourselves sworn in and definitely make sure you fill out the form and hand it in to Ms. Kelly.
Yes, hand it to me and I will.
Thank you very much.
Like, the final. Um.
Just don't take them off.
I do that.
You never swear them in.
That's right. So the next thing is the ethics statement for public library trustees. So everyone needs to read that over, and I know you all read your work packets and read them. I just need you to sign and date that and.
Okay. Period for public expression, I guess we didn't have anybody to do that yet, later in the evening. Approval of board meeting scheduled 2023. As everybody here knows, we meet on the third Wednesday of each month at six o'clock. We have a change for the April meeting.
We can actually put that back. Because they changed.
What was the issue?
I have a school board meeting that day, but then they changed it back to its original day, which is the 18th. So now we can put our meeting back, the original day.
So you will all be on the third, uh, third Wednesday on March?
I will be away as per my usual February vacation, so I will be unable to attend the vote.
Okay, so we need to vote on that?
We do, as amended.
Do we have a motion? And so move?
Stand on second.
Oh, favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we have the approval of the annual budget vote and trustee election, which is Thursday, September 28th, 10 to 8 here in the library, pending approval of the school district. And it's eight days after the budget hearing, January 4th. Can we have a motion to approve that? All four?
Aye.
Okay, the, the minutes from the meeting last meeting, 7:21 are in the packet. Hopefully, everybody read them. Is there any comments on that? Okay, somebody want a motion to approve? I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Back to the former president, Gloria, for the friends of the library.
There's not been any meeting, won't be till March, but I will say that one of our more active and beloved members, Mary Ann Bennett, passed away. Friday, the funeral was today.
Okay, treasures report, as I put in my, my emails, Elliot asked if I would wrap up 2022, so I've done that. And I'll make my last report here, it's my favorite part of the meeting, so I'll be jealous to hear you're carrying on. Elliot and I have met a couple of times, and he is very prepared to take, take right over. Okay, so we wrapped up the year. And the cash and the treasury note balances ended up at $4,009,13,350. I, just after the first of the year, the tre- treasury note that we had was a six-month note with a 2.25% maturity on it. It matured, and so we invested it in a ladder, which is different bonds, bills, maturing at different times, okay? So we bought a six-month, a nine-month, and a 12-month. And so they, they will mature at varying times, and it'd really be good, because if we have capital expenditures, the money will be freed up every three months or so. So we put two and a half million back in. The yields range from 4.33% to 4.54%, so excellent yields. Who would have known this time last year we could get in even 0.01%? So we're sitting in a good position there, and this will really give us a nice yield for our balance sheet. Warrants, I signed last week, and they were just normal expenses. There was a P S E G bill in there. We had none paid in December, so it was paid on the 11th when I signed them.
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Why did you pull out those three payrolls in the, in the agenda? Are they special or anything?
Oh, so, um, one of the things that our auditor recommended when he was here is that the board also approved the warrant for payroll. So that'll be something new that you all see, each of you can see, just the, the dates and the amounts and what payroll number it is. And do you mind if we pause so I can introduce you to our, our poor librarians who had a full day? So, um, to my left is Anthony Jamesente.
Yep.
He is our new emerging technologies librarian. Prior to here, he was at Hat Hallow Hills, and he'll be here usually Monday through Friday with a late night, Thursday nights. And then in periodically on weekends to do some tech help programming. And then on the other side, we have Emily Casenacki. Oh, I was gonna get it right. I shouldn't have second guessed myself. Casenacki, Emily comes to us from Brentwood, where she was recently their outreach librarian. Fun Emily facts include she speaks Spanish. So with the addition to, of her to our staff, we now officially have a Spanish-speaking staff member here. Every hour, we are open to public, which is great. And one in our children's department, which is even better. And Emily, I said, came from Brentwood, so thank you for, for coming to the meeting.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, welcome.
Are you commuting from Brenton?
No, from Blue Point, but that's not much closer.
That saves you about a half an hour. Okay. Is this better than commuting to Hat Hallow Hills?
It's more of a straight run, for sure.
Yeah. Good, good, excellent, excellent. Welcome aboard.
And you can stay, because it's an open meeting, or you can run away and nobody can blame you if you ran away?
We have a lot to do.
If you stayed, we pulled it against you.
Bye, thank you guys.
Safe trip home, watch out for the deer.
That's like a general greeting on the East End when you say goodbye to people like.
It's a nice sentiment, but.
Yeah, it's like, honey, watch out for the deer.
It's like break a leg, you know, when going on stage, right? Okay, so continuing. We had a great close of the year in charitable donations. Seventy-two thousand five hundred, including fifty-four thousand five hundred and four from a well request, which I think this summer, we were notified of that, so it is down on our numbers. We had a three payroll month in December, and as I mentioned, no electric bill was paid, we paid it, uh, in the office here last week. So we're at 100% of the year, as we closed it. Revenues were 4.3% over budget, mainly because of the charitable contributions. So that's really a good, good thing. And the expenses were 96.4% of the annual budget. And the villain, of course, was building repairs and maintenance, but we are handling that different now. Kelly has created a whole, a new line item, and not all of it is being taken out of there, but the amount to be capitalized that, that are not routine maintenance or service-related things. So that will be handled, so it'd be much easier to track the money that we're investing in all these things. Contracts, research, and everything like that.
Oh, I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Are there any groups that you, besides building and grounds, that you feel were overutilized or underutilized? More than it should have been?
Um, no, it was a pretty, you know, uniform under, most of them, most of the major categories, I would say. Personnel ended up being just a little over budget. And then the materials and program expenses was quite a bit under.
Employee support, too.
What's that?
Employee support, 70% under.
Yeah, we don't like to see them under.
So, you know, you have to remember, we're still coming out of COVID. There was, when you don't have a full-time teen librarian to do teen programming and things like that, they're, they're not here to, to do things like spend money and buy books. And so we, we sort of plug along as, as best we can, so that's where you'll see some of the, the other, the under-spending of the budgets. And then also, you know, depending upon how we just sort of categorize things, we have a lot of budget lines that, like, we don't, I don't want to say that we don't use, but when you look at all the budget lines, we have a lot of little budget lines we don't use, or budget lines, because this was my first time using this series of budget lines that I used, that, you know, like, we're not the ones we normally use for those items. A perfect example is something that Anne had caught earlier today, was she had asked why our service contracts were underbudgeted, and, you know, asked about buildings and grounds, and I went back and I looked, and our Enron service contract, I had attributed to repairs and maintenance, because when I coded it, it was for quarterly maintenance. So I was like, maintenance, maintenance. So that'll be changed in an adjusting journal entry, so things, things will, will work out. And we've, I've spoken with the auditor, and we're gonna sort of shrink down some of the budget, retire some of the budget lines that we just, we don't use, that are sort of there from other things. We have two budget lines for PALS. There's no reason for us to have two PALS budget lines. PALS is a partnership of automated letters and stuff, and I mean, like, it can go under one. You know, we have telephone contracts and telephone service or something like that. They can be the same thing, they don't have to be different, so. I don't know if that helps or hurts, but, and then the other part is your budget's your best guess, right? So, you know, I think the, we want to stay as close to our budget lines as possible, obviously, but the more important thing is that, you know, we stay on budget in each category, and then ultimately, overall. One of the things you'll see, which we really spent a lot of money on, is office supplies. And that's because Catherine, who is our local arch, we have a local archivist who's in there, and has, finally, we have somebody who has the opportunity to, like, really get in there and do all of this archiving, and that involves a lot of office supplies, you know? Sleeves to hold slides and special boxes and all of these things. And so one of the things we're gonna do before we put in the budget for 2023 is pull out that budget line and look and see what was archival and what was regular office supplies, and then create another line that's like archival office supplies. And so Catherine will sort of have it her own budget for those specific things, because we kind of want to know.
It used to be a budget line just for local history.
Yeah, and, yeah.
I think a lot of that was there.
Yeah. So.
It couldn't have a better name.
Yeah, so it's like trying to figure out what it is, is we want to do, and, you know, maybe that local history budget line, do we want to use that more for programming? So it's, it's sort of looking at the lines and deciding how we, how we want to move forward, so it's, it's a little more clear for everyone.
Uh, one thing I wanted to explain to the new trustees, and not some new trustees, Anne brought it up in an email today. Back in 2019, so it was just me and you and Anne?
Yeah, I thought.
You wanted to say?
Not Michael, but Dan was, Dan was here.
Oh, you were there, too? Okay, well, you remember that we voted that year to designate $120,000 every year of our capital surplus to go back into the budget. And the 10 years was to take us to when the mortgage was, could be finished and matured. So we would, every year, put 120 back into there to, for any, really anything at the director's disposal, personnel or something that came up. It has not been utilized every year. So it is a tool that we have, and every year it's available, and we might want to change the category. Eighty-five hundred, maybe change the name of it, because I don't think that really it should be, yeah. So we'll, we'll think about that, but that's why that's in there. And it was 1.2 million that was designated, a tenth every year, to, to bring back, and also to give, you know, a little break on the tax.
Well, not the plan this year was to review the floor and the staff, and that just happened, because you can't get people in here to do it.
Yeah.
Don't worry, I'm on that.
I know you are.
So would that? But it is, it is different, though, than getting into a big project, because this actually is at the director's disposal.
Yes.
To use how.
But I remember last year, about this time, you were talking about how.
Right.
That's where that money was gonna go.
Right, exactly. So are you gonna take it out of the capital expenditure category and put it into a new category? I think it just needs to be renamed, so it has, doesn't have that something that's big, you know, it's from capital reserves for the budget. So, any questions on that? That was kind of a very important thing, we did that here. And have we done it since? Well, it's always in the budget, and it's up to the discretion of the director to use it, and it hasn't been used.
I don't think we spent it in 2021 either.
No. So it's just gonna be carried forward?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we haven't spent it yet. But.
But shouldn't we be?
But you're basically on budget. I mean, you're close to spending all the budgets, so.
Right.
Yeah.
It's going out somewhere, but it's probably going out for small things.
Yeah.
To cover the line items that are over budget.
Is that in fact the case, though? Do we know that, or does it? I mean.
I don't, I don't think that we're taking the money out of.
See, that, that's, that's important, otherwise we're not.
We're not, it's my understanding, we're not spending it.
That's, that's what I would. Yeah, I think we have to look into that. So is it just? Make it's more active.
Yeah, it's my understanding, we're not, we're not spending it, because if you look at the income lines, at no point are you seeing a transfer from capital fund into operating funds, so we're not spending it.
So from the date from 2019, when this was established, until now, there should have been, what, three years worth of?
There should have been.
Should be 360,000. Four years. I think there was one year.
We definitely did it, we definitely did it.
2019?
In 19, and I'm pretty sure it would have happened in 2019.
I think what happened is, I mean, I know we all are tired of hearing blaming things on COVID, but I think what happened was COVID happened, and you had a lot of staff leave, and, you know, not leave, but, you know, get jobs other places, and money wasn't being spent on programming and facilities things, because we weren't in the building and all of those reasons. And so there wasn't anything to spend that $120,000 on during, during COVID, because we were essentially, you know, shut down.
Well, it's got to be somewhere, that's, that's, that's.
It's still in the back.
It's, it's in capital reserves. Is it?
Yeah, no.
But we really should, you know, have that accounted for and have that, I don't want to say segregated in some way, but I think there should be a running tab to show how much is accumulated, so we can look at our financials at any given time and say, okay, well, we have $480,000 or $360,000 at our disposal at this particular time. Sounds like a good thing for the finance committees next meeting. We have a recommendation from the auditors.
So, and I would say that's actually something that the, the auditors had spoken about, like, really, everything now is for all intents and purposes, because of how, how we keep our books, um, you know, undesignedated books, for lack of a better term. They're designated, you know, if the decision was made, we're gonna spend down this $1.2, $120,000 a year, but we haven't done it since 2019, right? Or we did it one year, and then COVID happened, the thing sort of got off the rails.
Yeah, and we also don't have, we don't have any documentation that shows, and we don't have a budget display that shows these different funds.
Yeah.
No, there was, there was a line in, no, we did have a line in the, it would have been in the statement of financial position. No, I know there was a line in some of the.
Right, and, and I mean, it should be.
Produced that would show that the 120 came out of reserve and went into operating expenses, but I don't know where that one was.
Yeah. I mean, if we could just like, you know, just, excuse me?
There is, but now here's the other thing, is that we also pull $18,000 out of that capital fund for the operating budget for things that are capitalized as well. So $18,000, which also, we didn't take out this year, because we hadn't had an emerging technologies librarian for the majority of the year, was money that was going to be used for maker space stuff and items in the library of things and the maker space. So that's also money that never came over, and we didn't have to pull that money, because, you know, we had money from interest, right? And we had other additional income, which sort of covered that.
So basically, we put in, I remember.
Oh, we, absolutely, and the goal was to spend that $120,000 on floors and stacks. Actually, it's gonna be more than $120,000 when all is said and done, so.
That, that's, that's all well and good, it just, I just would like to see it accounted for.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be like, your employer's supposed to make a contribution towards your IRA or 401K every year, and you say, you get your statement, say, oh, great, yeah, so this is what it is, the contribution this year, this is what the balance is, and, you know, just, I don't want to create necessarily more work for everybody, but, you know, that's, it's a relatively large sum of money.
Yeah, it was $1.2 million, it was 10 years.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on the treasury report?
No, thank you very much.
Okay.
Your excuse.
And it's all yours next month, Elliot. Okay, approval of financial reports dated December 1st, December 31st, 2022. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, I'll second.
All, all four?
Aye.
Aye. I sent the warrants out on a Thursday night. Approval of warrant numbered 12,703 to 12,743, and dated 12/16/22 to January 11/23, in the amount of $57,942.86. Do we have a motion to approve there? So move?
Second.
All four? Aye. Okay. Approval of payroll warrants at the recommendation of the treasurer. Payroll number 24, 11/16/2022, to November 29th, 2022, in the amount of $37,013.69. Payroll number 25, November 30th, 2022, to 12, December 13th, 2022, in the amount of $36,157.12. And payroll number 26, December 14th, 2022, to December 28th, 2022, in the amount of $35,408.82. Can we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve in all warrants.
And I'll second that. All four? That's Kelly.
Well, I just. We did have a tea that I wasn't here for, because I was in Crest Hallow, listening to Chuck Schumer.
There's pictures in dance paper.
Yes, we did get pictures in dance paper, which was, which was great. So my report's on page 34, we're already up to page 34, well done. Okay, so, um, we had a really popular end of the bank sort of party, the Happy New Year Party, which was on Saturday, the 31st. We were packed, there was popcorn, there was, there was cotton candy, there was karaoke, or some sort of dance game on with, with the video kids, the video games the kids are doing now nowadays, so it was a really big program. We were a little bit understaffed, because that just seemed to be the theme of, of, you know, between Thanksgiving and New Years, but we got a lot of positive feedback from the community, people were really happy about it. So next year, we will have more staff than, I don't know, somebody juggling fire or something. We have to outdo popcorn, not in the building, really, out in the plaza. Let's see, I interviewed two percent back of teen librarians, I hired one of them. She's gonna start March 1st. Her name is Liz Hughes, she also hails from the Hat Hallow Hills Library, and I think I need to send Helen Cross of the director there, could be okay or something, because I took two of her, and two really good employees from her. So, you know, I think I have to send her a thank you note or something.
Because she's gonna expect something.
Don't hurt people.
Like, that's right, that's exactly what it is, so don't hurt people, okay? So, yeah, so we're really excited, Liz is a real go-getter, she came with very lovely recommendations, so I'm excited. Al Costa of Beldesari and Costa was here, making Wanda and my life miserable for very good reasons, because he's the auditor and that's his job. So we spent two full days with him, and they were full days, from like nine o'clock to six o'clock. And then he would go to lunch, and we were like, oh, thank God, and then he would come back from lunch much too soon, and we were like, oh, no. But we're, we're working on the audit, we're working on, you know, reviewing our internal controls with him. He has a lot of recommendations. What I want to remind everyone here is, is that this is, and I think we've spoken about it before when we hired him, this is a very different audit than what we had previously done with the, the prior firm. So the type of audit we're doing now is Gatsby, which is a governmental audit. It just fits better for a library, because we operate on tax dollars. Um, what we were doing before was more of a standard audit, but we're basically holding ourselves to the standards of school district or school district public library. Um, and so he has a lot of recommendations coming from that vein. As a reminder, we are a small association library. He understands that. He knows we can't put everything in place that is required of a school district or a school district public library. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't aspire to such things if we can. So it's um, it's a lot. We're, we're plugging along. We'll get through it. Um, but I might have told him that I might have been back in the building at least twice. Um, as a joke. He's got a good sense of humor. So, so we're just, we're plugging along on that. And um, that's why when he's finally done, he's going to, historically, the audit was always presented to me, the treasurer, or the director, the treasurer and the board president. This year, it's actually going to be presented to the board as a whole. So everybody can sort of get on board with what they're looking at because for those of you who haven't been here before, it's all new. But um, those of you who have been here before, it's going to look different.
That'll be done at a board meeting?
It will be done at a board meeting.
Quick question, just refresh my memory. What is the difference between a public school, library?
Sure. So you have two different, well, there's like three different types of libraries. The um, the ones that we're concerned about. Um, most libraries are either a free association library or a school district public library. A free association library is technically a private five oh one C three nonprofit owned by the Board of Trustees. Um, and we are not held to some of the same standards as a school district or a school district public library. So um, it doesn't mean that we don't do things like that. Uh, if you think like the bid process for things, um, having to go out to public bid or hiring off of contract or Wicks law, those sorts of things. Um, it also means we're not civil service. Uh, so we are not held to civil service law and we're also not held to, um, but it also means like, there's some things that we have to do that public libraries don't, school district public libraries don't have to do. So we're legally required to participate in New York State paid family leave, but like a school district public library is not because the government does not make rules that the government necessarily has to follow. Um, and so school district public libraries are generally your civil service libraries. Um, I ship health insurance, New York State retirement, um, as civil service. So you hire off the civil service list, all of those things.
Or any libraries out there?
The only school district public library east of Riverhead is Montauk. And this is an interesting fun fact. Um, Montauk Library, I believe, was founded in like nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-two. And at that point, any new library districts created, that were created, had to be school district public libraries. They could no longer be association libraries. So that's why Montauk is a school district public library and not association library. And um, poor Tanika's, bless her heart, um, good luck. Like, it's, it's hard to hire out Montauk because everybody who's on the civil service list is, you know, less than Riverhead. So they try to grow a lot of libraries.
Yeah, yeah. It's hard.
Um, let's see. So, um, the engineers were on site January eleventh. We're waiting for a report back from them. Um, I'm waiting for Delta Well to get back to me um, about scheduling the additional learning. Uh, Paul Grosser will talk about when we talk about the HVAC because I just got this morning the new um, proposal from them for additional work, which I emailed all of you about mid-afternoon. Um, we'll talk about state mandated training uh, under new business. This year, training is state mandated for all trustees. So um, I've spoken, I spoke with Bill as president and I spoke with um, Kevin Verbsy, who's the head of the Suffolk Cooperative Library System, who is um, I'm going to say deputized just because it sounds funny, but that's, that's not the right word, to provide that training um, to libraries for it to count towards, towards the state training. So we'll have to pick a date to have you come to that. Um, spring is fast approaching. Um, we are going to plan lightly for both teen and adults, mostly because Wanda and I are doing the programming for teen and adult. We're very, very tired. But also, we're hoping, um, and I don't want to steal your thunder, Dan, but we're hoping to do floors in the spring as well. So um, we don't want to plan a bunch of stuff that we then have to cancel. Um, I did attend a fun, a couple of meetings, the directors' meeting at Half Hollow Hills. Um, I got a hug from Helen then. I don't know if I will ever get a hug from Helen again. Um, and then also the state of the region address, which is put on by LIA, which is the Long Island Association. Uh, Suffolk Cooperative Libraries usually fill two tables. Um, I'm really, I don't know why, but I'm the only person. I represent the Zone One East End libraries every year as the, the only fool willing to get up at, you know, like five o'clock in the morning to drive to Crest Hollow at eight o'clock in the morning for the breakfast. But.
They have a good spread?
No, it's terrible. But here's, my grandfather, who I was very close with, lived in Scioto. And when I went to library school, um, I would stay with him. He would always make sure he had a brownie and occasionally, you know, we would, we would go out and we would always go to the On Parade diner for breakfast. And so I go to this meeting and then I treat myself to real breakfast.
That's where, that's where a lot of the board meeting, committee meetings take place.
Isn't it?
All the nonprofits.
It's great. So, so I do, so I go and I treat myself to breakfast um, for getting up so early and then I go home and take it. Um, that's what I did while we were having a wonderful tea here at the library that Nancy um, host was, was library hostess for. Um, and that was such a popular program. I think we're going to try and bring it back in the spring. Um, because we had a lot of people who want to see it come back. That, and what was the other program that was super popular last minute? Oh, the crystal meditation. Yes. So, yeah, we're going to bring that one back as well. And she had covers for the smoke detectors because she did want to sage people when I was.
You're going to be asking for a CBD license, right?
I think it's like two hours.
Oh, so it's covered?
Recovered, recovered, yeah. Um, so that is, is my report. When we look at statistics, I did update the statistic sheet for you. Um, you know, visitors, not as many as November, but it was the holiday season. Uh, we were closed a couple of days. Um.
But you have more library cards?
We did have more library cards.
Yeah.
And I think that that happens a lot because people buy their loved ones, things like um, knooks and e-readers and iPads and then get them online to, to use those services. And then also kids come home from college and they have to do, you know, projects and homework and sign up for their library cards uh, so they can do those things. Um, as you can see, YA program attendance was light. That is all Wagner. Um, you know, that seems to be the only thing we're bringing the kids in for. Um, but it's okay because you don't have a teen librarian. Um, so you'll notice that I noted that there. Um, but this will hit the ground running in March and we'll get, we'll, we'll get us back on top there.
Children's is way up there.
Yeah, children's is killing it. And a lot of that was that, um, that party, that New Year's Eve party. Because if you remember, New Year's Eve was, the weather was terrible. Um, so everybody was like, get the kids out of the house and give them sugar and let them run around the library.
Your website visits all the way up.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, so one of the things we did um, was um, made sure all the computers in the library, like, go to the library homepage first, which helps with that a lot. So like, it used to be like you'd get on a public computer and you'd hit it and it would like take you to Google. And I was like, could we please change that? So you go to the library's webpage? And I think we changed some of the staff computers too. Um, just so it, I mean, it bolsters your numbers, but we want people to, when they log onto the internet, look at our page and go like, oh, there's a board meeting. Oh, they're closed for Martin Luther King Day, you know, like, oh, there's a slide that says something exciting, like, tea party is going on. Let's, let's go do that. Or I'm looking for a book. Yes. So.
Okay.
Of course. Is there any update on the um, passport situation?
I have not been able to breathe. Um, I can tell you, we had um, that's probably, like, in my brain, we're thinking fall just because we have to get through, it's a lot of training. Um, and a lot of things need to be put in place before we can make ourselves a passport facility. And, you know, ultimately, what we're looking to do is remediate the geothermal HVAC, replace the floors. Um, you know, it's annual report time. We just, there's too much on our plate to do the passports. But I can tell you that Wanda and Catherine both took the notary exam and hopefully they passed, um, so we will be able to offer notary services.
So Zach Harbor residents can go to, which Hampton does to pass?
Which Hampton doesn't.
Which Hampton's not doing them. Um, and I'm not sure why. Southampton, I believe, does them.
But you can go to.
Montauk does them, East Hampton does them, Shelter Island does them.
I called Bridgehampton and they said they weren't doing it.
Yeah.
I called Bridgehampton to do one and they said they weren't doing appointments at the time. I think they don't have the staff for it.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, they lost their staff.
Or possibly they lost their staff that made them do it. Um, it's a, I mean, it's a lot of work, right? So, and it's a lot of training because basically what you're doing is you're, you're pushing paper to create a government document. Um, so there, there is a lot of training that goes along with that. So I'm hoping like in the fall, because then we can roll it out right around the time of the budget vote. Um, as always, like a new service we're going to provide, as we told you, approving the budget. So um, that's, that's the goal. Um, especially now that we will be, not that we're fully staffed, you know, once, once.
You can go make some more visits to Half Hollow.
Yeah, or, or I go back to Half Hollow Hills and continue my, my relentless poaching of the, of Ireland.
Okay, any more questions on Kelly's report?
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Okay, committee reports. Uh, you guys are great. You beat me to it. I was going to ask everybody to have a meeting, every committee, the first quarter, but we've almost had them all. So kept me very busy. Um, all right, over to Dan for building grounds.
Building and grounds met to discuss um, this coming year. There are three projects that we want to work on. The, the HVAC, which is ongoing, which we will discuss in your business. Second thing is flooring. Um, the buildings and grounds, we picked a, we ended up picking.
You picked a floor.
We picked a floor and we're wanting to do the entire first floor, changing the flooring. Um, the third thing is replacing the stacks in the second and third floor. And, oh, everywhere, excuse me, everywhere. And um, rearranging the fiction to, to make a teen room area, when we do that. Um. The goal is to have the floor and the stacks done before summer. So we wanted to sort, we were going to move on that and we're going, figured the best way to do that is to close the library for a week and just bang it out. They can be working on the floor down here while they're doing the stacks up above and then switch out the stack. So we close for a week, you said probably in February?
No, no.
Tomorrow.
Um, it's, it's basically based upon lead times, right? So if we can get the flooring, you know, contract and we can prove that and they can order the flooring and we can get the shelving, I have a Zoom with Nancy and Brad from Creative Library Concepts. Um, on Friday, where we're going to go back and look at um, what they had proposed. They're going to give me an updated proposal because it was from a year ago. Um, and then, you know, sort of see what that looks like cost-wise and then we'll have floor plans. And then the goal is to, in a perfect world, have it approved by February. So like, everything can be like ordered and installed, you know, shortly, you know, like, if, if supply chain issues are still, you know, like, ten to twelve weeks out, you're, you're looking at April. Um, but we want to stay away from that, that Easter week holiday, um, or very beginning of, of May.
The other thing that we need to group, to do is basins. So we need to fix the plaza because the ground is all weathered and reinstall the bricks over here in that.
And Kelly's crater?
And Kelly's crater.
Kelly's crater.
That's what you named it. Kelly's crater.
I want a plaque.
We're going to bury it.
We still can.
That's it for building the ground.
Okay, yes.
You mentioned, um, the area where the fiction books upstairs to be made into the teen center.
So what they're going, what, what they want to do is take the teen out from down here and rearrange the stacks down here. And the Sally Sussman Fiction Room is going to be organized in such a way that the back half by the window would sort of frighten them.
Yes.
It was going to be the teen area. So the stacks are going to, you're going to have like half the fiction, they're going to rearrange the fiction to make this sort of teen area back there with um, rearranged the shelving. One idea is to take the computers out and turn that into more shelving area because, you know, switched to a lot of laptops.
So, yeah, so one of the things um, I did really early on in, in my career in Bridgehampton and um, several of my colleagues have stolen it, but they have given me, have, have given me credit. Um, is no longer giving up space for desktop computers for people to sit at, to circulate. People want to use a computer, they don't have their own, you give them a laptop and they go ahead and they sit in that beautiful rotunda space or they take it outside and they sit in the plaza or they sit where, or they're working on a group project and they sit down here at one of these tables so they can chit chat. So it's, instead of having all of that real estate go to five computers, where it's a rare occasion where all five are in use, we're going to do some custom millwork so it matches the shelving that's on the first floor, but they'll be taller. Um, and then we'll split the fiction collection between those two spaces and then possibly have some of it um, on this, this floor as, as well. Um, you know, whether it just be, um, you know, like, we're, we're still tweaking. But we, we've created a situation where um, we, the one place that will be losing some, some stacks will be teen. Um, but that's, that's okay because teen collections are constantly changing over. That's, that's, you know, there's not a lot of core collection in, in teen. Um, so for us, like, you know, let's the kids read the new, next new hot thing, like, it's not the hot thing anymore.
Except for the hardcore section.
So the, yeah. The comic books. Oh, oh, and we're also going to move the.
The dirty books.
The dirty books off the, they're not dirty.
Romance.
What was the term you called it?
I call them bodice strippers. They're romance.
But I mean, what was the library term? It's like teen, what was? No.
No, they're, they're.
They're romance, like, they're, they're, they're.
Rom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The romance novels.
Adult thing or whatever.
The Harlequins.
The Harlequins.
The bodice strippers.
Or, or as isoplasically put it, the bodice strippers. Um, so we're going to move them up and then move the graphic novels down.
Into the tube.
Into the.
So you're not going to lose some exhibition space for when you do the art show?
We are going to lose some exhibition space, but the only time we use that little bit of exhibition space is when we do the painting art show. And you'll notice, we have stuff up there, but we have nothing in the stairwell right now. Um, so we do have an opportunity to, to utilize the stairwell more than we do.
And the, well, the other thing is the teen shelves will be lower.
Yes.
So that you could, so there may be opportunity to do some art in there.
And we can also look at doing some, some arts in the, the um, maker space as well. Like, there's, there's plenty of places for us.
Not, not hooked onto the wall, but there may be ways to also have.
Yes, like, there's, there's plenty of spaces we can. Yes, like, there's, there's plenty of spaces we can.
And where is, I'm thinking about the maker space.
The maker space? So, I was talking to Anthony about that. The maker space is set to go in that front vestibule of the library. That's sort of the next project after we complete the moving of the teen collection and the flooring. And really, that's gonna also come out of our long-range plan, because we're gonna do a true long-range plan this year. And, you know, sort of getting feedback from the community, like, what do you want in your maker space, right? Like, do we, do we, is it, what other maker spaces have? Is it just 3D printers and sewing machines? And, and, you know, like, laser engravers, or, you know, does everybody already have a laser engraver? You know, they're, they're looking for something else. If a very, you know, we have a community full of artists. We might find that, you know, our maker space might swing more towards, towards arts than it does, you know, some of the more mechanical things that libraries of Ireland lean towards. So, that's really a project for Anthony to, to wrap his head around our community, get to know what people want, and then sort of create a maker space that people will use. Because the last thing we want to do is create a maker space that we think people will want to use. And then people are like, I don't, I have a son, you know, I don't want to use that. I would rather we had a, blah, 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 blah. So.
So, one thing when you're doing building down, you mentioned that it's sort of so periodical, you think there's fewer. What about books that are in kind of a periodical, like travel books, where you get a new one every two years or something? Could they be considered periodicals?
We, we certainly, we certainly could do that. You know, we talked a lot about, you know, also using that as display space for our library of things. Did you guys know we have a library of things? No, because you never see it, because it's in cabinets. So, one of the things, like Anthony had come up with, which I thought was a great idea, is we use empty DVD cases that we have, that sort of display, like, what the thing is, and it has the information of what it is. And because we have those magazine or periodical shelves, we can actually put them on there, and when people are reading the newspaper, they'd be like, what is this here? They have a microscope. I'll see if I want to take that home. Or they have blood pressure kits that you can check out for a month. Like, using that as display space. But I do like the idea of, you know, we could move travel books in there. I think by the end of the year, simply because magazines are going out of print at an alarming rate, we'll be able to fit all of our periodicals on those two shelves, like the one that shares the wall with the windows, and then the other shorter shelf.
But we have to be careful. We have to be true to.
To what it is. Yes.
No, no, and that's why we're, I was trying to think of things that are periodical.
Like, yes.
Where they do have a date on them.
Yeah.
So, they, they go out of date.
Yeah. So, and obviously, we want to also keep seating in there, so people can sit in there.
Yeah, because they're gonna have to bring a laptop.
That's right. I mean, the, the other thing we also, also look to do, which I know some other libraries have tried, is, you know, to include, you know, a couple of, like, tablets in their periodical room that have flipster all set up and ready to go, so people can use flipster for digital magazines. I mean, there's, there's a thousand.
I mean, the magazines themselves are not, they're just, they're not.
They're not. Yeah, that's the thing. It's not that we don't want to buy them. It's like, it goes out of print, we can't get it, we try to fill it with something else. And then we'll have that for, like, a year or six months, and they'll be like, oh, we went completely digital too.
Yeah, and, and you're going to, it's great.
Yeah, so, you know, like, we're always trying to, Wanda, what was the one that went? Do we have people in Santa?
Yes.
And it's no longer available, so now we have something else. Yeah.
I think it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, it's, it's.
My adventure recommendation, if we could, since we have such limited space and so many things necessarily to show, and we want to get out there, what we really have available back in the cupboards or other different rooms? What about if we could install a series of flat-screen TVs that are around, you know, various parts of the library? And we create our own content, almost a commercial basis, and say, we have this, we have microscopes, we have this thing, that thing. And we can have even some of the community, the kids produce these library commercials, in essence, and we can change the content. We can also do advertising on these things, so that. But after time for events.
So, we, we currently do that behind, we do that up at the reference desk. We have that big screen that we also use for programming. So, we do have slides at that reference desk we have talked about, and it is in the plan for when we reorganize this lower-level children's desk to put another digital display on the wall. And I think, do we have a high outlet on that wall?
There's one behind the shelves there.
Yeah, there is a high outlet, so that we can do that.
Everywhere that we can. I mean, you know, we have space, like, over here. Oh, yeah.
I mean.
We can put up a white screen in front of it.
Here's the thing, we could also look at, in this room, putting the hanging system on this wall and that wall, so that we have additional.
But it's just as much so that we can advertise, you can utilize the space that we have. You're talking about trying to get out there, everything that we have. And if you're a parent, you're sitting there with your child, your eye might hit something, right? It was, you say, oh geez, that's really interesting. Now, that same type of commercial, so to speak, perhaps could be used on the websites, it could be, you know, so, it's going to be changing, the content is gonna be changing to suit whatever needs that we have. But it's gonna get out there that, oh, we have this service available, we have that, you know, type of thing available. So, go to it, and they'll ask for it, and they'll go sit up in the periodical room, they'll sit down here, they'll do whatever they want. But at least they know that it's available, rather than maybe putting up hard copies of something.
Yeah.
And show it actually being used. And that will inspire some people to say, oh wow, I didn't realize that they had blood pressure cups.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, finance, budget, legal, and contracts. Mr. Elliott?
Well, we haven't met yet.
But we might.
Try to set a date.
Yeah, now, what is the full committee?
Yeah.
Full committee is you, Bill, Mrs. Finance, Michael.
Okay, maybe put an email out.
Let's set up something, you know, after the meeting.
After the meeting, yeah. Okay, fundraising, outreach, and publicity.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we did have a meeting, and I thought it was a very productive meeting. But we discussed a number of different things, and we just want to break it down into several different components. Since it's fundraising, community outreach, we broke it down into different segments. We had the ideas for fundraising, we had the ideas for community outreach, and it's two different components. But we started off by Kelly discussing that she wants to create a database for donors and important contacts of the library. And I believe, talking about buying this database or this program, Little Green Lights.
Little, Little Green Light. They give you thirty days for free, and then you can purchase it, like, four hundred and eighty bucks for the year. So, it's, it's a low investment. We put it in, we try it, and see if we like it. I had looked at three different gift works, which was what we used in Bridgehampton, which had its limitations, which would keep me from, from using it again. There is a company called Blackbaud who does fundraising software. It is expensive, but it's also far, far more than what we would need to use it for. But Little Green Light sort of, it's our little, our, our, our little library. And it's something that other libraries are utilizing with great success right now as well.
So, that's gonna fit hand in glove with two things that we're, we're trying to do, is this fundraising, community outreach. And they're gonna complement one another in all aspects, fundraising and community outreach. Now, as far as the fundraising is concerned, we'd like to restart several things that we had in the past. One for the books, the house tours, you know, and also restarting a targeted annual appeal and getting a letter with that. We're gonna work, hopefully, in conjunction with your group. Yeah, yes, and see if we can get that started. That kind of was really hampered by COVID. But I think it was wildly popular. People really looked forward to that. And I think that would be absolutely fantastic to get started up. And then same thing with the targeted annual appeal. Again, that would work with database that Kelly was going to get. Now, meanwhile, while we're trying to get donations from people, we're building up these things, so that we can contact these people for a different program. The other thing for fundraising that we had addressed, and Bill had alluded to it before, is this idea of testamentary dispositions. Because we've been getting interest, to a certain extent, from people who, in their wills, last wills and testament, are including John Germain Memorial Library as a beneficiary. It's fantastic. It doesn't hurt anyone. And as part of that, we would like to, I'm gonna bring up, I think it was, you know, creating an endowment fund, so that you'd have something like, you know, Mrs. Russell Sage Society for people who want to, you know, reach a certain financial level, or even the Jeanette Wagner Teen Writing Program. That was also very successful. In just trying to get people, you could focus, you could give people more potential donors, they could target their donations or their state requests directly to those things, unless they want to just give it to the library in general. We could create basic templates or instructions for people, and this would fit in with the database, instructing people, this is all you have to do. You just include us in, in a will or a console or some testamentary disposition, as far as a trust disposition or something. But you make John Germain a beneficiary. If we get one of those a year, outstanding. I mean, you can, you can get more.
I'm not sure what the difference between an endowment fund could be, and donating to the library and going to the general funds.
Well, what you're doing is you are saying that we would like it, like, the Teen Writing Program. We want to create something that is going to continue on a going-forward basis. And, you know, so that this is a program that we would like to have in perpetuity, for as long as we possibly can. So, just, it's another option to explore, as far as that is concerned.
I, I feel like, you know, in my experience of dealing with major gifts, which is what we're talking about, the larger gifts, you, you want, especially testamentary gifts, you want people to feel like they're giving very permanent gift. You know, in other words, that their, their gift is gonna keep on after they're gone. So that rather than it being expended in, at the discretion of whoever, that it would be held. And, you know, it seems to me it would make sense to have more and more funds held on, in the name of the library that would then produce, would generate income, and the interest on the endowment would support the annual budget. And, you know, I mean, in a way, Bill is moving a little bit in this direction. I say, well, let's invest in treasury bills, and let's get, you know, with, with cash, essentially, with library cash, let's invest in T-bills, and then we'll get some income. But you could have a designated thing where people gave a chunk of money, knowing that the money would be held, period. And that we would then use the interest in a planned way towards the.
It acts as an annuity. It keeps on funding that particular project, whatever it is.
Yeah.
So, that, that's just some, one of the things that we had discussed. That's the fundraising component. The community outreach is a part of it. Again, everything works hand in glove with one another, because you want to get more interest in the library. That benefits the fundraising. So, we talked about more adult program, varied adult program, minority community involvement, it's English as a second language, bringing that community into the vault. The teen program, we talked about Harbor Frost, Harbor Fest, you know, Kelly had brought up the idea we should be doing more things in conjunction with Mash Shemuel Park, which is wonderful. Several, same with a lot of the other organizations that are, are, there's no reason that we can't, you know, help one another. Discussion also circum, we talked about programming in the rotunda, which is something I think all of us would really like to see. And that's something that, that we will discuss. Collaboration with friends, that really, we'd like to, you know, continue that association and build on that as well. Then, we got into, one of the things that I wanted to discuss too, was a lecture series. And that was a regular lecture series, you know, could be every week during summer months, very similar to what they had at the Hampton Library. And change the topics, but at least designate, say, okay, we're gonna have a series of maybe six or eight different lectures that are gonna go for the month of July through August, and maybe June, or whatever it is. But it's going to be every week on a designated day, one way or the other. Be nice if you could do it on a Friday, it starts everybody's weekend off.
Oh, boy. You know, again.
I already, I can only have one, by library decree, I can only have one library director mad at me at a time.
So, you can pay for protection. Don't worry, I know people. So, so, but, but that, that is something that would, would necessarily, you know, be explored. I had sent out an email to the committee members, you know, this past week, which had opened up in the middle of the night. We have beautiful outdoor space here, both the lower plaza and the upper plaza. And I know that we're concerned quite often with the weather. And I brought up the idea, perhaps we could get a tent, a temporary tent that would be covering, especially the lower plaza over here. I think that would be great. If the weather gets bad, we have a tent. Now, I'm talking about a tent. A bigger tent, something that's gonna hold, cover that whole area.
It covers, it covers a good portion of it.
Yeah.
It was almost ten by twenty. It covers this whole section up between the building and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think, think something, think something that really, you know, you're gonna fill that tent, because in conjunction with, and same thing is using the upper plaza. Too. Again, you're creating visibility, you're getting more community involvement. It's just like when you would drive past Hampton Library and you slow down to crane your neck, what the heck is going on over there? We want that here. Doesn't only have to be adult program, teen program, you know, youth program, and children program, anything along those lines. With that is perhaps doing an idea whereby you make it an evening type of thing. Whereby maybe you get three or four high-end food trucks that would park along Main Street over here. And you have a frisco dining or something, like, little snacks, little tables right in front over there. I don't think they're gonna let us close down the street over here. But that, in conjunction with the lecture series, the programs that we're gonna have, is gonna draw attention. This will necessarily be a center for people to come. And in, with that, that in turn will lead to fundraising, instead of people saying, well, what can I do for the library? You want to be a part of this library, because we're very forward, as far as that's concerned.
And I think that, you know, with now having a full staff, and, you know, Rachel presumably coming back in, in April, we'll finally have people to do that. That's always, that's sort of been our, our biggest issue, is we, we are, we're short-staffed when it comes to the, the staff, which is tasked with putting on those big events. So, I think they're all definitely doable things, now that we have people to do.
Final component of this, to ramp it up a notch even, is to, more to expand the outreach of this. And is to have part of these lecture series or different components of it broadcast, not only, whether it's radio, podcasts, television, C-SPAN, or TV. There is no reason why any number of people who are celebrities, who are writers, who are producers, who are directors, or whatever it is, aren't gonna want to put their face out there. That in turn is gonna drive interest to the library. That is going to make this an event, so that now, you know, just seeing the book review from Huntington, or whatever it is, you have a Civil War lecture here, and you have a lecture on baseball, which we had talked about here. You know, any number of events like that, and we know that we are geared towards that, and that this is the place where you're gonna go before you're gonna go to the Market Hotel for dinner. It's gonna be a nice little, whatever it is. And you can expand that to local television, so instead of watching Zayn on Channel Twenty, or whatever it is, you know, for the town board meetings, you get to see what's happening at the John Germain Library. And the possibilities are endless. But again, it drives more interest to. It drives more interest to the library, gets more people involved, helps with fundraising, which allows us. To juice up the program and that much more. And I think everybody benefits from that.
I have a couple of questions for you. You know, when you sent the email, it occurred to me, I I'm a little curious, it's like, what what your ambition is with this in terms of. What level of like draw you're hoping for? In other words, are you talking about moving in the direction of celebrity?
Not necessarily, interest, whatever interest there is like that. So it could be something that is not necessarily a celebrity, but take teen programs. Maybe you get an influencer. You know, one of these YouTube influencers, influencers here, that somebody that now you're going to get fourteen-year-old to twenty-one-year-olds over here. We're going to.
Ideally, what would your goal be as to how many people might eventually attend those things live?
I don't know. Now, if it does get to.
If it's in here, it's exactly sixty-three.
Which is more the reason that you have it outside. Okay, now.
I disagree with you on that because the outside spaces are really very small.
Right, well, this is, this is, I I thought of this, Ali, I thought of this. And I talked about this before with, you know, some of the other board members. There's no reason it has to be confined to the John Jermaine Library. We should be working in conjunction with Bay Street Theater, the Sag Harbor Cinema, the church. Any of these places that they want to.
The Whaling Museum, which is right across the street and has.
Co-sponsors. Why not? Mash Shimul Park, for sure. This is our sister organization. So Diane can, you know, say, I've got a report. We had it at a joint event at Mash Park. Up on Stan, where they had two thousand people that were circled around this big gathering, whatever it was. And it was fabulous and it drew attention to the park and also the library. We all went. So we know it's going to be a monstrous type of event. Or ideally, if this takes off and it becomes something that. What I had talked about before, I had Bill Kelly, a lecture event on baseball. He said, okay, we are going to have old timers here at the John Jermaine Library. Meanwhile, from two to four, we're going to have the New York Mets, the nineteen eighty-six New York Mets at Bay Street Theater. And then we're going to have, you know, from four to six at the Sag Harbor Cinema, we're going to have Hall of Famers telling stories. You know, hosted by Mike Lupico or somebody else. Those venues can fit and maybe they would be a little bit. Easier to host a larger crowd because they, that's that's what they do.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the other thing is you you do want to, you do want to have some aspect of the event that is. That is truly yours, where where you're showcasing the library itself. Like, for example, you could use the the upper plaza, which is tremendously dramatic. Location where you could, which you could use essentially as an as an exterior lobby. You could have your food trucks, you could have a band on the plaza, but the the whole point is bring them up the stairs and into the library. And then to some event happen in the rotunda. So that, you know, because it's the most dramatic. Entrance of any building anywhere up and down Main Street.
Absolutely. And you got the traffic over here. People are seeing.
You don't very often see anybody, unfortunately, on those stairs. Occasionally, somebody's reading a book or something.
We're going to put some seating on the stairs this summer.
But but unfortunately, you're right because it sits as a mausoleum. In essence, and and that's.
We want, you want people to come up and come in.
We want to invite people.
It's not an inviting edifice as you pass by.
No, so we've got to change that.
It should be made inviting.
It can be, right, and we've had to change that mentality. So that is part of the things that that we need to do and we need to get it started sooner rather than later in one way. We have to at least, and that's one of the things the committee hopefully will recommend is we say, okay, listen, we're going to start baby steps. Set aside some time. These are the events that we're planning. We're going to work with.
And I think I think you all will be surprised at. The team here at the library that the the library of ventures we have assembled. Who can really take some of these ideas that you're putting out there and we, you know, can can make that happen.
Right, and give it even, right, if you say the teen programs or what do you want to have, what do you think that would have, that would draw this? The children's library, okay, we're going to give you the third weekend in this. Here we go. Great, you've got it. Who do you want to bring up? You know, the adult program, this is, you know, what Bob Windsor was talking about, you know, you want to see, okay, Bob, tell me who you want to see. What do you want to discuss? Let's do it. You know, ad hoc committee right there, you know, I mean. The opportunities are endless, but again, this helps with community involvement, outreach, getting people into the doors. Helping with the fundraising. It's all part of the same package. We're here to serve the community.
On a smaller scale, but.
You you could do that sort of during the summer, like if we. Or Saturdays or course, you know, Sunday afternoons. Although in the summer, you've got that you're competing with every day. So it's almost better to to sort of pick like. I mean, the summer keeps getting longer, right? So it's almost like, 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 do you pick May, do you pick June, do you pick September?
Pick September, which, but then.
But you see, the thing is, it doesn't have to be competing with any of those things because you'd like to know that, let's say, it's a music festival. Great. There is even more stuff here that you can come to since you're already in the village. Guess what J.J. M. was doing?
Yeah, but as I said, the one for the books in a rotunda. Repeating it. And so that it becomes something that people go to out of routine.
Yeah.
Right. And but you see, the problem there potentially, I would see is that if you know it's there every single week, it's not so much a. Special event. I think that was the nice thing about the one for the books and the the house tours and things of that. He said, this is the one time of the year where we know we're going to have a good time. Whereas if you have it every week, then you're like, well, can't make it this week, but I'll go next week and. Would help and we could do different aspects of that too, right? You could have different authors who would have come in.
Yeah, that's, I know, would definitely be relying on.
So I think. I think the committee is going to meet again.
I wish I. You were right. Yeah, but I just took up half an hour of everybody's time, so I'm sorry. It it's going to, you know, this, this, this is something that's on, you know. And everybody's mind. So if anybody has any suggestions, let's go with it. You know, it's not just exclusive to. You know, that committee. So the more heads are better. Okay, on to you, Ann, with personnel.
I will make up for Michael. We did meet and we will discuss it in the separate session. So, moving on.
Gloria, policy and home range planning?
We have not yet met.
But we're going to be.
I guess we would have to wait.
I think we should.
Until Kevin.
We should wait until after Kevin. But also, there is, there's a couple of policies that we need to look at sooner rather than later. That came up when we were working on. Period of college with forums and things of that nature. There were a couple of things that will come down the pipe, which will sort of be a. You know, finance committee, policy committee sort of will have to work maybe a little bit in tandem when it comes to recommendations from the auditor. So we could put that stuff to work on this year.
Okay, the ever-popular park board.
Well, they were all thrilled when I told them that I would be representing the library for that year. I mean, sincerely, everybody applauds, I must be. So it's a quiet time of year, obviously, for use of the park, but Jeff and Tony, the two. People who are in charge of the planning of the park have busy themselves cleaning up invasive species around the auto pond. Both noticed, but auto pond is part of.
Invasive plant species?
Yes, invasive plants, yeah. Bird wildlife that I guess you don't notice, who's spending many days in the pond. And. Yeah, active discussion about updating the website. Also, it's a time of year you get lots of requests for use of the park over the summer months, different kinds of camp programs. And their interest in advertising it, how they could do it using the park's website. And I guess that's about all the hot news from the park at the moment.
You're going to go back to icing it over in the winter and using it for skating?
Then Jeff can't get out there with the canoe, you know, the powerboat or whatever. Apropos of the park, I was advised that there are two nesting bald eagles. Yeah, I I don't know the exact location.
You guys have to set up a webcam for these eagles?
We have a name there, like a naming contest or whatever.
We saw one in at Morton Reserve a couple of weeks ago.
Right. But this is, this is, this is on in the park. So, yeah, several people have. Okay, all business, our favorite topic.
So something I sent you all out this afternoon was the sort of new proposal from P.W. Grocer. As you know, we reached the end of that first phase of work that they did for us. And they'd love to continue to work with us, but like, not for free. I mean, I'm fun to work with, but, you know, people, you know, still have mouths to feed, so. And I aspire to retire one day. So they did give us another proposal. This will be working in tandem. Them really working in tandem with Lizardo's, who's our engineer and Delta Well. As you know, we discussed some of the more precarious things about our wells, where we really do want to keep P.W. Grocer on as as a consultant. They're sort of like, let's, and we also want to do that pipe testing. So we're going to have our plumber come in and remove sections. Of well pipe, which P.W. Grocer is then going to go get tested. So what they're they're suggesting is. Da da da, I'm just going to sort of read what what they have said. Basically, basically, you know, they're saying that they're going to conduct the outline, the above outline scope of work. On a time and materials basis not to exceed nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So that's the not to exceed. We're hoping not to exceed that. So, and this is really like.
So we know what the number is.
We know what the number is. We don't really have a choice. We need to keep them on.
Well, you know what the number is, but you actually don't know how far down the list to test. Before they hit.
Hit that number, yeah. So, well, you know, well. You know, I know that in speaking with, with just very briefly with Delta Well, they do want to make sure that. P.W. Grocer is still very much available to them as a, any. As a resource, just because of, you know, we're talking about doing this this more on base of cleaning of the well, but we already have one collapsed supply well. So, you know, they were able to look with the camera, go back and review the camera footage. I know something I had mentioned. Was there was a concern about the well screening via PVC or metal. They were able to review the camera footage and they're confident the screening is in fact stainless steel screening. So we don't need to worry about flowing our wells to this. But and no, I did not get a return email from our previous well company. Who I did ask, like, hey, guys, want to tell me what that well is made of out there? They did not. So.
It tells you something right there.
Yeah, they they did not return my call. Although, interestingly, when you called them. Which is getting stuck on this endless loop. So I did send them a couple of emails and they did not get back.
You want an attorney letter?
Got some free time. I think, I think we're, I think we want to.
We really need to be involved, so well, company.
We don't. I don't think, I don't think we need to. I think if they're confident with the camera work, then that we can be confident and we'll just keep lugging along. And just continue to hope that, you know, climate change continues to work in our favor and we continue to have these more days.
Kelly, do you need us to approve this?
Yeah, I'm just going to do it. And that's, that's that. That's the HVAC update.
Do they have a date of when they think they can.
Uh, Delta, they have not given me a Delta date yet, so I'm going to follow up with them tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Okay, on to new business, annual review of home range goals and objectives, you see on page thirty-six.
One of the things we did discuss around this time last year was doing a true long-range plan. So that'll follow up the policy of the long-range planning committee, one of the other things, and this sort of dovetails into to the next topic. Was to find somebody to do a long-range planning trustee retreat. Kevin.
Vegas?
Vegas, we could go, sure. You know what, we'll go to Jake fifty-eight. I hear that place is.
Then we'll go to the diner inside also.
I happen to like their BLT. So, yeah, so. This is what it is. If you have opinions, thoughts, feelings, ruminations. You know, send that to me and we can have a conversation about that in policy of long-range planning. The other part of that is the trustee training that Kevin is going to do is not long-range planning trustee training. I'm going to reach out to some of my colleagues in the system and see if we can find somebody really jazzy. Not that Kevin's not jazzy, but he's Kevin, right? Find somebody really jazzy and inspiring to do the long-range planning retreat and maybe somebody. You know, who's who's library adjacent and maybe not necessarily like libraries. When I, on my, on my way out the door from Richampton, we had completed our long-range. Our, we called it a strategic plan, our strategic plan, ours was four pages. It's a lot of graphics. And a lot of that was pulled from corporate. We pulled from Trump's sort of corporate mission statements and vision plans and things of that nature. So I think, you know, we can do a traditional long-range plan and a traditional library long-range plan and look at a bunch of those. But I think it's also interesting to see what other, what other not-for-profits and what other, you know, even corporations are doing. This is sort of how we want to move forward in the future.
Is part of the long-range plan also to have measurables or something where you're going to be looking at it on a yearly basis? Did we meet our?
Somebody asks you. What does the library do? What you could say in an elevator? It's two, three sentences maximum, never, it should never be longer and just like take it down to the minimum. And if you can get it in one sentence, you get it.
So, yeah, so that's exactly it. Like, your mission statement is your elevator pitch. Your vision statement is like, sort of like, what you feel. Like your, your big idea, it's your lofty feeling and your, your, your goals in your long-range plan is this is how we're going to implement it. You know, it used to be you did a long-range plan and it was a five-year plan. Like, you just can't do that anymore because the world is changing so quickly. Yeah, so, you know, even, even a three-year plan is sort of like the longest you can absolutely go.
So what is?
But you can say where you want to be.
Yeah.
What are our parameters?
Well, that's why we have to have a jazzy. That's why we have to have a trustee retreat to talk about what it is that we want to do, what it is our plan is and how we're going to accomplish it. So that'll be part of the trustee retreat and the review of other long-range plans. And of course, that will include the. Somewhat dreaded. Community survey, which, you know, you spend a lot of money on it. When you get ten percent of people to get back to you, you're really, you've got good numbers, right? Communities. And then you, we, I mean, I have feelings about community surveys because they're always too long. And they only tell you what you want to hear. So we've really got to look at how we want to. Um, and they only tell you what you want to hear. So we've really gotta look at how we want to, what questions we wanna ask in our community survey, and are they open-ended, are they, you know, on some sort of scale? Like, how do we put together a survey that somebody isn't gonna beat their head against the wall if they have to answer it? So we, we can look at all of that.
But a lot of this has been done before.
It has.
Other libraries, other association libraries, other organizations. So we shouldn't have to reinvent the wheel.
We should not.
And some of them do it very successfully, the same thing with the long-range planning or whatever, who can we borrow from, you know? And uh, instead of, you know, keep knocking ourselves out.
But I think we should knock ourselves out.
Yeah.
Like, if, if our goal is to do all of the things you talked about in, in, in publicity and outreach and all of those things, then we need to put that into a strategic plan of how we're, how, how we're gonna knock.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying that as, as a template.
Yeah.
So to speak, there are, you know, organizations that have done this.
Definitely borrow from other people, but remembering that we're, we're, we're not looking at their, their institution or the library, we have, we need.
Right.
A unique situation.
Yeah.
We wanna, we want to, we wanna play that up as much as possible because that's what will make, make it a successful one.
Like a template's a template. Like, I could dump things into a template in Canva, you know, tonight, be like, look, I've made a plan. But I think we really want to do a true survey of the community and really think hard about where it is we wanna be in this region.
So maybe you could find somebody uh between now and next meeting.
Yeah.
And we can schedule, I think we should do it.
So rather than later. Yeah. I'll reach, I'll reach out to some of my colleagues.
Okay, so uh, New York State mandated annual trustee training.
Uh, yes, so we have to pick a date. Um, the two dates that Kevin, Kevin gave me three dates and then he uh, he took one back. Um, because he gave it to another library, possibly the fellow guests.
Yeah. That's good, we'll take it.
So these, these are the two dates we can choose from. One is Monday the sixth, the other is Thursday the ninth. I would ask that maybe if Monday works for everyone, we aim for Monday the sixth.
That's the day after a board meeting.
And he took it away.
Give it to him, he takes it away.
So my, my choices are the sixth and the ninth.
The sixth and the ninth.
Oh, that was last year.
February.
So my thing is, I can, you know, as always, my choice is Monday. Um, the ninth, I wouldn't be able to come to after work, which would be after six. And it's right before we close for two weeks, so it's gonna be, it's stuff to do, but I could do it.
It's also a little bit tough for us here because we are open till nine o'clock at night and we do have some programming. And, um, you know, it's just, if we're, if we're gonna have a, a trustee meeting where trustees feel that they can speak freely and sort of, you know, whatever it is that we're doing, it might just be easier to do it at a time when the, the doors are locked.
And I will also offer our house.
Um, and I'll, I'll have a, I'll have a calendar.
I was gonna say, is it free snacks? Because I need snacks.
I, I will, I will make you a ham sandwich. We'll, we'll do something.
The last time we did a library retreat here was when the library was opening up at ten, and I think we did it early.
I think we did it at nine.
We did it like, before the library opened.
We did.
What's the, what's the time?
It's six a, six p.m.
Probably be like six to eight.
Six to eight, okay, good, that's good, all right.
Um, you gotta be.
Yeah.
So Dan, you're not available, what?
The ninth is hard for you.
Well, the ninth would be hard for me.
But it sounds like it's hard for the library.
But it's, yeah. And then I, so I vote, I, Monday the sixth is of course my choice. I could, we had to do it tonight.
I'm okay with the sixth.
So everybody good for the sixth?
Are there any dietary?
Okay, six it is.
Is anybody vegan, vegetarian?
You're not a vegetarian.
I'm vegetarian.
You are vegetarian? Okay. Does anybody have any?
You can eat my vegetables.
Well, I actually am pespicarian, but that's okay.
You can have tuna fish sandwich, you're gonna be a ham sandwich.
Okay, so.
So we're doing.
Monday the sixth, at six P.M., right here in the library. Okay, pure period for public expression. Oh, okay, now we need a motion to move into executive session at.
Seven thirty-six?
I make a motion to move to executive session at seven thirty-six.
I will second that.
Okay, we are unmuted.
Seven forty-three.
So we have voted to come out of executive session at seven forty-three.
I made a motion.
Dan Glass, oh, I could, and second that.
Oh, yeah, okay, fine, we seconded it.
Now we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Hold on, wait, we're still muted. We have to do this all again.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know why we're, so a motion was made by um Dan to come out of executive session at seven forty-three. It was seconded by Ann and unanimously um approved.
And now we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I moved to re-adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay.
And can we vote on that?
Thank you.
Thank you.